Good evening. Thank you for coming to the Village of Wapinjafalls Mayor and Board of Trustees meeting for Wednesday, August 11th. I'll ask for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please remain standing for a moment of silence for longtime resident, Norma O'Rourke, who passed away, and Marlese Carde, longtime wife of village clerk John Carde, who passed away July 26th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any recognition and announcements, clerk?
Recognition, announcements, special events. Board. Committees.
Oh, there's a nine eleven thing on nine eleven. Nine eleven is America's ceremony, seven P M, I think it is.
Seven to nine.
I'm not sure when it's two. Seven. Mizzou Park.
Anything else? Roll call. Mayor Serino.
Present.
Trustee Sadati.
Here.
Trustee Ponti.
Here.
Trustee Niznick.
Here.
Trustee Huber.
Present.
Trustee Ruffin.
Here.
Trustee Larisella.
Here.
Village Attorney Wallace.
Here.
Action on minutes, July 7th and July 28th.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second was.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye.
Authorization to pay bills as per.
Next one, July 28th.
He said them both, I'm sorry.
Did he use both?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Authorization to pay bills as per approved warrants.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye.
Carry. I'm in receipt of, from the treasurer, that she performed a court audit. It's an annual requirement and it was fine. So I need a vote to accept that audit.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that Mike Ruffin?
That was Adam.
Is that?
I was asked at the last meeting to go out and solicit security for the boathouse. So I used Doyle Security, who provides security for this building. I met with, and it's in your handout here, what I found. I met with him down there. He went through the building. And he came up with a price for installation of forty-four hundred thirty-one dollars, which would have a monthly charge of thirty-five dollars. At the moment, we have Fish Security down there doing the fire monitoring. Doyle would do both, which would eliminate Fish at fifty-six dollars and fifty cents a month, which includes fire and internet. We really don't need internet down there right now, so I don't know why we even have it. So my recommendation, of course, it's your decision, is that we go with Doyle. They're already doing our building here. We eliminate Fish. We pay for the installation, which is fair for that size building. And our monthly charge would be thirty-five instead of fifty-six.
Did you get a, did you get an amount for what it would be with internet if we wanted to add it in the future?
No, I didn't, but we can do that if you decide you ever want internet there.
I think eventually.
Can't be that much.
Eventually, we probably will.
So forty-four thirty-one for the installation and then thirty-five and you get both security, which I believe was, it was the doors and motion detectors. Both. The fire alarm system is already there, so we don't have to pay for that. That's, somehow that got in there.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, trustee Huber?
I'll second.
Second by?
Mike Ruffin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry. I'll give you an update on the Cobbler Building. We did a sizable amount of work up there. Started off with the roof, then we re-pointed. If you don't know where the Cobbler Building is, it's up on West Main Street where Franny Reese Park is. We put a new roof on. We pointed up bricks that were falling out. We totally redid the restroom. We have an HVAC unit there, heat and air conditioning. We have a 200 amp electrical service port. The only thing we, the only two things we haven't done is the floor, which is acceptable. We don't need to do that right away, but we could always do laminate there if we wanted to later on. But building inspector, inspector tells me I have to have a thirty-six inch ADA approved door put on. Because of the way it's located, we can't put it where the existing door is because there's a rise of about four inches from the sidewalk to the building. And if you were to put a ramp out, it would encroach into the sidewalk and that's not allowable either. On the north side of the building, there is a big window and there's brick around it. The windows gotta come out, the bricks gotta come out, and the door fitted in. That's the only thing that's remaining before we can talk about getting a tenant, of which I've already received four interested parties, four different interested parties to go in there. I called my contractor, I had a price of around, I think it was around four thousand. I called my contractor today, who's very busy. He said, John, look, the price of material has gone skyrocket. He's gonna give me a new quote. Hope to have that for you at the end of the month and we can talk about that briefly, if you want, okay?
Carde, just a couple of things, if I could talk, speak about that property?
Yeah.
You know, one of the things, and I'd be happy to do so, but if you're gonna be putting in a door, you know, there is a local business that services a lot of the businesses around. New beginnings and I could reach out to them and see if they could give us, not a price to do the work, but a price to get the materials. And I was down there this weekend, my wife and I, when we were putting up the banners, we were just checking things out and it looked great. And I think it's exciting. And then we walked down to the amphitheater, which is, it could be an interesting use space. Still think, I know we're gonna talk about who will inhabit it, but I still think we should consider the benefits of the local guy, Jason Gesser, who has Sawmouth Radio, because it seems like it would be.
Well, he's the first consideration.
I think it still is, when I was there, it felt like exciting and you've project managed the job well, it looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He will be the first one to consider. In fact, the previous mayor already has a contract written up.
Right, yeah, I'm aware.
So.
But with the amphitheater being, you know, we've got the trees removed and the amphitheater, it just all looks like a promising.
Well, the occupants will be up to the board.
Sure.
And when we get there. So that's really the only thing remaining is that door. There was some foresight where they poured concrete to that window, so the concrete is there at the proper elevation. If you can get that name for me, add them up.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
I'll call them.
Okay.
Mizzou Park, as you know, the storm that hit July, June 26th, I think it was, a tree came down, crushed the electrical box that was located out front by the entrance. So I spoke with our village electrician a couple of times now, that we wanna abandon that facility that was there, trench all the wires to one location by the gazebo. I spoke with him yesterday. He's putting a price together, I hope to have it, I hope to have had it by tonight because I'm working with insurance. This is an insurance case. So I'm hoping we get a hundred percent of whatever he's gonna do there. But I'll keep you up to date on that. Hope to have that for you in two weeks as well. Any questions about that? Mayor, the next one is our board is discussion to appoint Joseph Cavasini, part-time recreation director in a non-union position.
Well, it appears the negotiating committee has ceased negotiating. It's, that negotiation has ended, so the issue at hand is this recreation director, non-union. And as I have intimated to trustee Niznick, we will discuss this on the 25th. So there'll be no discussion or an appointment. The way it was done, this now falls under a mayoral appointment. So I'm not, I'm not gonna make an appointment tonight.
Mayor, can I just ask that we meet before the 25th to have some further discussion due to the information, some of the information we received today?
Sure. Sure.
You wanna have a special meeting?
I don't know if we have to have a special meeting or if we can talk and communicate, whatever's best for everybody. But I personally would like to have more conversation before the 25th.
This is not something we can talk about here at this meeting?
Yeah, you can, but if you have a quorum of four, you can let me know so I can announce the meeting.
So we really should be discussing this in the executive session.
So we can discuss it later today, can maybe a little bit more? I feel comfortable with that if we can make a few minutes for that.
We just can't promise a special meeting between now and.
Well, I know we have a full agenda tonight, but if we can fit it in tonight, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Yeah, also myself, I'm gonna be taking some vacation time.
Okay, we'll talk about it tonight.
Okay, so that's table to the 25th, well, further, table to executive session?
Correct.
Okay. Permission to allow the sale of beer in Mizzou Park Festival of the Falls, September 18th, 2021. It was brought to my attention late this afternoon, and I haven't confirmed it or verified it, that that would be illegal use in that park as per the deed. Again, I haven't researched the deed. This has been an issue in the past. I think you should table this until we have our council review the deed.
Yeah, I did not, I wasn't aware of the deed restriction, but I did prepare a resolution because any alcohol use has to be approved by the board by a special approval. So that, since that is gonna be tabled.
Can I just say something? I mean, we talked about this in the last Festival of the Falls, I think Commissioner Ferry brought it up to our attention. It was, I think it was nineteen we had it. They allowed it then in the park, because that was the fire, no, it wasn't nineteen. Nineteen you brought up, but they allowed it the day of the fire we had on East Main Street. Because I was there that day. But back in the day, I know this is in the deed for a while, when Knights of Columbus used to do it and the Fire Department used to do it, they used to close down Mizzou and have the beer on Mizzou and you can have it in the tent area along Mizzou, in Mizzou Park, back in the day. Is that something you can look at also too, or?
Well, they did have it until there was an accident and told people weren't proofed and it wasn't really run the proper way. And then they discontinued doing that. I have the deed next door, I just didn't have, it was late in the afternoon today when I was told about all that.
But I do remember in nineteen they had, they were serving beer in there and eighteen they had beer in there.
If I could just ask a couple of questions, if we're unable to, because of deed restriction, serve at Mizzou, you know, in the park, or is there another location? Or can we consider lifting the, I don't know if you're lifting the open container or what you're doing, but to allow people to purchase them at some of the places locally or on the sidewalk in front of the.
The board has approved lifting the restriction on containers.
Yeah, in the past, right, but I'm saying can we.
I'm not aware of the board ever approving another location, I wouldn't rule it out.
Well, I'm just saying if we, if Mizzou winds up being, if we're at an impasse and we cannot do it at Mizzou, perhaps the board could consider another location where a beer tent could be there. Or at the very least allow an opportunity for some of the other restaurants that have current licenses to be able to walk in, you get your plastic cup and you walk around.
Oh, that's in consideration, I mean, your Legion Hall is right there, not far from the park.
Exactly. I just know other municipalities do it, they do it safely, I mean, we have a commissioner that watches over the police and the police know what they're doing, so it should be a way to keep things safe, just an idea.
You have different options, but I will provide the village attorney with the copy of the deed tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will tangle this to the 25th?
Yeah. You have questions?
We have questions.
Yeah. On a question?
Yeah, I have a copy of the deed and it does specifically say, no alcohol shall ever be sold in Mizzou Park. I don't know if that's the exact sentence, but it's something like that.
I'd like the village attorney to see that.
Yeah. I have it somewhere in my closet, stuck in my office.
Well, I have, I have the original deed in my.
If you have it, you could show it to me.
Yeah.
It does say that, not that we haven't done it for years and years of picnic in the park, but I don't think anybody ever cared to.
Well, there was an accident there and it could have been a lot more serious than it was when the guy ran over the sign at Schraub's Funeral Home.
Yeah, I remember.
So. Okay.
Charlie, did you have a question?
I just wanted, with the ability of businesses to, the businesses in the village are licensed for on-premise sales. I don't believe they can sell alcohol. The village can't give them permission to carry that off premise. I don't think you can, I think it's the state liquor authority and they're not gonna do that. So I don't think, because I looked into it when they were looking to have this and it.
I don't know if there's a notch, you could set up a beer truck over there at the Legion Hall, I don't know.
They just can't walk outside of it.
So you're saying, just for my own clarity, when they, when they've said in the past or in other municipalities that you can't, that you can, they lift the, I'm trying to think of the verbiage, but people say like, we lift the, what, open container?
Container.
That, that's not really, that's just them just kinda saying it.
You might be able to, but I think the individual businesses.
Have to petition.
What they have is on-premise licensing. So their licensing doesn't permit them to allow, so they can get in trouble for doing that, so they shouldn't, you know, if you tell them again.
I see, no, that's, that's good, enough. I wouldn't wanna set up businesses to.
There's a one-time permit you can obtain for off-premises.
I know when we go to Daytona, everybody's just walking around, I think they lift it for the event. But all the restaurants and bars that we go to make you finish your drink before you leave that area, but we're allowed to walk around and drink if we bought it out of seven eleven or something.
Oh, I see.
Maybe that's.
I mean, I've seen it in Fish Grove, I've seen it in Beacon, but maybe it's just being carefree and not cautious, so.
I will provide the village attorney with that deed, a copy of that deed tomorrow. Next is approval, so that's table, yeah, so this will be tabled to the 25th? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, continuing on with the Festival of the Falls, they would like approval, again this year, to block the parking on Saturday. That's in front of the Zion Church side of the park, from the parking lot to East Main Street.
Any objections?
So you can't park there, you're saying?
Just for that day.
Just for that day.
Is that just gonna be with cones or?
It'll be marked off and they'll coordinate with the police department.
Why would you not want people to park there?
Cindy?
Because there's a lot of, there's an influx of traffic on that particular day and it.
Well, where do the people, don't, well, there'll be, there'll probably be parking.
Parking lot.
In the parking lot.
There's a huge parking lot there.
Oh, that, oh, you're not saying the park.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was like, I didn't get that.
On the street from the, from the parking lot north to East Main.
Clear. That's very reasonable, do you want a motion for this?
Yes, please.
Make a motion for that. I'll second it. It's very reasonable.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, thank you.
Mike Ruffin and trustee Larisella, okay. I'm in receipt of a request to waive, excuse me, thirty-day advance notice for liquor license renewal for AJ Cafe down on South Avenue. I met with the building inspector and he has no objections.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
And trustee Ponti?
Did you have a question?
There's a big deal. The question is, what does it mean? The municipality has to be given notice of the application, has thirty days to respond. All right, and we're waiving the waiting period.
So they'll still have the liquor license?
Well, so that they can.
Get it back.
They can get it.
Oh, okay. And code enforcement has no issues with that?
He does not.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye.
Last meeting, the board asked me to run a ad again for the park custodian and the resumes will be accepted through August 13th, that's Friday. I have not received any again this past two-week period. It's been a month now.
I informed the clerk that there was one outstanding application filled out, but the gentleman hasn't returned it yet.
Do you want me to keep running it or what do you? It doesn't cost a whole lot to run it, but.
What is the custodial work? Garbage cans and that kind of stuff?
Ten to twelve hours a week, picking up branches, debris.
Garbage.
Emptying garbage cans into the dumpster, I guess, down there, that kinda thing.
And any other little odd job that might come about?
Might be some weed whacked.
Cans out to the curb and back on Tuesday and Wednesday.
Correct.
Yeah, Mizzou Park.
Oh, I don't know.
Check the other.
Mizzou Vets and all of them.
Temple.
Yeah. We got, we got to Friday, come here, app.
I mean, I don't have a resume to talk about. There's no qualified for that, but I don't think qualifications are too high.
It's not only, it's not only one park, it's all of them.
Yeah.
So board, do you.
That might be a little much, I know.
Well, if you want me to run it again, I will.
How much does the ad cost, John?
Thirty-five dollars.
You take a break and run it. Nobody wants to work right now.
No, there's help wanted everywhere, so I'm not surprised.
How many parks, a lot of parks?
Maybe when it dries out.
How many?
All the parks.
All the parks.
How many?
I don't know, six, a couple of pocket parks.
Do you have to be specific? Couple what?
You got Mizzou, you've got Temple, Mary Reese Park. Vets Field.
Canale.
Canale Field. I think that's.
The amphitheater.
How old do you need to be?
The amphitheater is Franny Reese Park.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. You know what it is, these ten to twelve hour jobs could turn into something better, that's, that would be motivation, I think, enough for a young person to try to get into a municipal position, but nobody came forward. So if your one does, I'll bring it up on the twenty, at the end of the month. Otherwise, don't advertise, I'll let you know if I get any more between now and Friday.
Yeah, I'll take a break so you don't get fatigue, advertising fatigue.
All right. Okay, the last formal item for discussion is I was called by a trustee, asked about the alleyway at Ten Market Street. Some of you may recall that before the fire at Ten Market Street, the board authorized KC Engineering to do a study on the stormwater runoff. It was gonna be a two-phase deal. They were gonna survey it, then they were gonna make a recommendation to the board. Phase one survey took place, that's completed. The fire hit, the board suspended any further action on that. As a stormwater coordinator for the village, it's time that we take action again. I would like to resume that study by an engineering group, who you choose is your business, but the surveys portion is complete. I have my own recommendation for it as a stormwater coordinator for the village, is that there are two storm drains there currently in that twelve-foot by forty-foot section. Are you all familiar with that Ten Market Street easement? Or property that the village owns?
Yep.
Is to connect the two storm drains, the one, to the one midway down, remove the stairs, continue with the drain pipe down into Market Street. There's a stub already down there, I'm told. And then get an easement and quit claiming it to any property owner that wants it and be done with it. We already have a lawsuit going on, it's been going on for two and a half years on a trip and fall on those steps. Okay? Trustee Ruffin?
I'm sorry to interrupt, John. What is the plan for those steps, like a rip out, ripping out those?
We never got to the plan from KC Engineering because of the fire. The board suspended any further engineering work. It would be my recommendation as a stormwater coordinator for the village, past nineteen years, that you remove the steps and run a pipe down through and be done with. At the moment, water is running down reservoir, making a left turn going into Courtney Coles Building and washing out the rest of the area, all the way down to Market Street. We have barriers up, we have fences up.
Question. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Two things. So if we are to be given that land to whoever would want it, if the, Mr., if the fella that, that's about to build where the burnout was? Jeff Knight. If we decide, if we, if he decides he'd like to take that and we're gonna be involved in part of the remediation with the drainage, would that property, would he be then allowed to build upon and maybe have like his accessway or that walkway be almost like a, I don't wanna say a tunnel, but some kind of a covered hallway meet, where he's able to build above? Like initially when one of the parcels had talked about having some kind of a covered walkway in another part of the village. Could they do something like that, because it may be of interest then to that gentleman who's gonna build because he's gonna be able to increase his square footage? I don't know, but.
That's a question for the zoning administrator and because of the setbacks.
Well, I understand with the setbacks, but if you have a pass-through, if you're, if you're doing the same thing you were gonna do, even if it's just another floor, it may be of interest, is all I'm saying, because we're trying to get some, we're trying to get somebody to take custody of it. I don't know why you'd take custody of it unless you can, if you're a property owner, unless you, and pay taxes on something unless you're gonna be able to make a dollar off it.
It's my understanding that if there's village infrastructure that is running beneath, you know, that walkway, that a permanent structure would not be able to be constructed. So that, that's something that like our engineers were in the process of, doing an inventory of what exactly is there.
And then are we able to put that in our RFP and for what engineer is gonna examine this, so we're not beholden to KC Engineering?
There's a process and, yeah, absolutely.
That doesn't have to be lumped in? Okay.
But when, whenever a municipality sells or leases its own property, it has, it has to occur.
Well, sure.
Yeah.
But I'm saying we wanna, we might wanna start that ball rolling while this man is about to break ground, because if there's a way for, if there is an incentive for him to change his footprint, he may wanna do it, that's all I'm saying. It's something, if it's important, it's maybe important to start really doing it. It's not only important for him, but taking care of this would resolve, like John had.
We have a formal complaint filed that.
Multiple.
Stormwater is running down to a building.
Oh, yeah, I'm aware.
Yeah.
So we, we.
So.
But if we're looking to pass the property to somebody, somebody has to want the property. And there's not gonna, you don't just wanna shovel steps for pe- for people, that's all I'm saying, so.
Well, steps, I, I would strongly recommend that steps be removed before you get there.
Remove them tied to drainage and don't rep- put any steps back in.
But anyway, if the board decides that you wanna continue on with an engineering study, you can hire an engineering firm to do it.
You know, just, I know, we need to resolve it, Mike, but just to be clear, right now as it stands, that building, you may wanna remove those steps, but the way they have it, the tenants and the storefront owners are gonna have to continually get access to the back for their garbage removal. So you can't just remove steps and expect them to climb a hill. That's why I was saying this. I understand like it's great to just remove the steps, plant some grass. But you can't tell now the people that own like a deli, you gotta walk up an icy hill to throw your garbage out. And that's what planning has decided, a lot of the ref, the, the garbage and things are gonna be in the back, so. I, I just think it's something that really has to be figured out.
Well, I hope the building's being configured to a way that they can have rear access.
Well, it is, because the steps are there, but if you're saying.
No rear, no rear access, uh, ex- exit.
Well. There's a, that's what they're saying about the garbage, when I sit in the meetings, that they're gonna, you know, tenants are gonna be going out the front and walk, like, walking up the back to bring their garbage out.
Well, that's nice, telling the walk-in village property to.
Well, these, these, these storefronts are subterranean. How are they gonna, I mean, the store is under the ground. If you look right now, the wall goes under the ground, there is no door for that person to walk out their garbage. So that's, that's what I'm saying, this is like, it, you, we, there's a lot of moving parts to developing this multimillion dollar building. And it be not, they would probably wanna just be able to walk out their back door too, except there is no back door for them to walk out. Cause Marshall's Deli was under the earth.
What did they do prior to?
They walked out the front and they put it in a little receptacle that was in like this little enclosure that's not gonna be there moving forward.
Right.
So they're gonna go up the side and bring the garbage. Which is why I was saying if he builds up above it, there's a tunnel path, I mean, there's a lot of things you can maybe do when you're trying to reconfigure.
They're not gonna have the garbage the way it was before.
No, but, well.
It's not gonna be like.
Well, I've been sitting in the planning board meetings.
Well, that's why I'm.
That is, yeah, that's what I'm saying, so they, they intended to have some of the garbage in the back. Because there's the snow issues, there's like a lot of issues, 'cause it's next to a residential and.
So this wouldn't, um, have anything to do with the rentals up there, it's just your storefronts you're talking about?
That's what I believe, I mean, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I, I know that Marshall's Deli, the barber shop and the other people.
Right.
Were s- subterranean. So everything had to come out the front.
So was Chubby's, but they have spot off to the side.
Well, they have that big enclosure.
Well, he may have to give up part of his first floor to allow. Anyway, I'm here on stormwater runoff issue. If you wanna continue on with a study.
I do.
And stop and help these people who are complaining about their flooded basements. You need to make a decision, can we continue on with an engineering study of an engineering group? If you don't wanna use KC, do you wanna?
Yeah, I make a motion that we, we find a new, uh, new, uh, engineering firm who will do the, um, investigatory work into looking into the storm drain, and maybe you can, as the storm drain chairman, you can supervise that. Make that motion.
For Ten Market Street.
Second it? I'll drive it, if you want me to, I'll drive the thing.
Okay, so we have a motion and a.
Second.
I'll second.
And a second.
Who seconded that?
Ms. Miznick.
Ms. Miznick? Trustee Miznick. Now, who's gonna decide, and this will be a board decision, on what engineering firm you use?
Well, I think we have to sit down and look at it.
Yeah.
Right.
We wanna be confident that we have the right person.
So you wanna think about that between now and the end of the month?
Well, you're gonna have to get paid.
Yes, we're gonna get paid. People who are interested.
Okay, you go out the bit.
People that are experienced, people that are interested.
For that project?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So Craig, are you going to, uh, put something together as far as how the board would advertise for bid?
For bidding? Yeah, I can do that.
There'll be people we don't even know about.
So, I just need to know, uh, have, uh, just, you know, word specifications of what we, that's all.
Okay, survey's done, so we have that portion finished. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. So, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mayor votes aye. Thank you. Uh, before we, I have, I'm waiting for a few more. Uh, I have, uh, an estimate for trees, possible trees that might need to be pruned and whatever. So, we're waiting for, uh, at least one or two more estimates. Uh, for, from the storm damage on, uh, in July. That board meeting, I believe it was the seventh. May I say? Yes.
Is someone going to, obviously, we're gonna try to get estimates, but is someone gonna walk through? Is there someone designated to walk the people through what we're looking for?
Well, I believe Pete walked this one through.
Like I told you earlier, I just wanna compare apples to apples, I don't want someone coming in and thinking they're doing a different scope of work than what we've, we've gotten.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Something for already, so I just wanna make sure that we're all looking at the same thing.
Yeah, and we have, we have some maps here with everything located on it, what they're gonna be doing.
Right.
So, should be pretty clear. Can I just, just, I wanted to just, just, uh, s- comment on a couple things. There's been a few things that were brought to my attention through different residents and, um, I had to reach out to the highway department on a few different occasions for a few different things, and they were super responsive. And they, um, took care of the residents' concerns quickly, like real quickly, which was great. Um, some of them was road, some of it was roadwork, uh, and some of it was, uh, landscaping. So I appreciated that, and then I wasn't here last meeting, but I wanted to thank, um, the mayor and the volunteers for the fireworks. Because it seemed that on social media, people were thrilled, I spoke to a lot of residents, I was disappointed I couldn't be there. But I think it was a great event, it was excellent. But, we had, it was done with all volunteer work and I just wanted to thank everybody who volunteered and, you know, put themselves out there to make it, and I wa- I'm sorry I wasn't there, but that's all.
It was an outstanding event and we received many compliments about that event. Commenting on the, uh, debris and things that are around the village, on the south side of East Main Street, as you go up the hill from the corner of Market Street up, there were, I think, six or seven trees planted when they did the, uh, reconstruction of East Main Street. The tree surgeon said trees will never grow on that side of the street because of the sun and all of that. And I gotta believe him because, I think five of the seven are dead. And are no longer there. And they are, the holes are trip hazards, and that's another suit we got in front of Mama Mizetti's. So I said to Pete, let's remove the gravel that's there, and the next time you pour sidewalks, let's level those six or seven spots.
They were, they were starting that today.
Good.
I see two, two areas done in.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I didn't know they already started, but.
To touch base on what Adam was talking about, the weeds along the road on East Main Street there. Whose responsibility is to take care of the weeds there? I, I don't think it's our highway guys that go and cut weeds on people's property, aren't. The building owner owns the sidewalk, owns the sidewalk to the curb, correct?
Where are the lea- where's the we- where are the weeds?
They were in the trees, remember when I called and I asked?
Yeah, oh, in the tree.
And you instructed me.
Right.
I didn't do anything until I asked, uh.
I mean, if I gotta maintain and everybody else in this room has to maintain the sidewalk in front of their house and the, the grass box in between the road and the sidewalk, I, I think the building owner has to maintain what's in front of their building, not the highway department. Because if that's the case, then, then we shouldn't maintain the sidewalks or the grass box in front of our houses.
Well, Kevin, just so you know, I don't disagree, I was just trying to find a solution and.
Yeah, I understand, I, I just wanted to bring that up, 'cause I just, I don't think it's right to, I mean, it's.
The village of Wapngers Falls is responsible for the sidewalks, unlike most places. If there's something wrong with the sidewalk in front of your property, it's the village's responsibility to correct it.
But, but not to weed it, not to weed it.
I don't know about the weeding part.
And cleaning the snow is the res-.
I only deal with tripping falls and things like that, I don't know.
Right, the sidewalks heaved, it's different than if it's snow covered.
Who put the trees in?
Uh, it was approved by engineering when they did the.
So we supplied the trees, did we ask the people, but, I'm just, uh, 'cause I don't know.
I don't, it was Pajee Martin.
Did you get a tree whether you wanted one or not?
Well, I know that, no, I know Mr. Petrelli at, um, wagon wheel, you know, expressed he didn't want a tree, so he didn't get a tree. I wasn't asked when I was over there, but I like trees, so I would've said probably, yeah.
It was part of the, part of the design, approval of the design, New York State DOT.
The weeds aren't just growing at the trees either, I saw that picture on Facebook that you commented on it. It's coming out on the sides of the hydrants and the guy wires and the telephone poles, F, it was full of weeds. I did notice the day after that post, so it was all gone, so somebody did get right on it.
Well, that was the highway department, because after I spoke with Clerk Carge, he, he felt, you know. I think it's tricky because, you know, just to be honest, um, you can decide that you wanna have building owners take evan- uh, be responsible. And you, I'm just gonna speak real candidly, they're probably not. Many times in the, you know, Mike and I have been dealing with some enforcement issues, and it's very hard to get people to do things that they should maybe wanna do, or even they should have to do. So, it's gonna come to a thing where as a commu- I think, and I could be wrong, and counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's gonna come to a time where we just say, well, do we want it to, do we want it to function and work and be right? Or do we want to stick who should have to do it, do it, whether, and they're not gonna do it, and you're gonna leave summons, and it's not gonna get done, and people are gonna. So, I just tried to make something happen while the whole world on Facebook was crumbling and collapsing at the weeds. And so, that's all I did.
But we, the, the rest of us, I mean, I live on a corner and I have two three-foot strips of grass that aren't mine, and I'm required to maintain that grass. Or I'd probably have three-foot grass in front, and I'd get it fine if I didn't, uh, so, it should be the same thing now, but, well.
You're gonna get the phone.
I wouldn't let that happen anyway, but.
Well, that's the point, that's what I'm saying, like.
And there was, that's been happening for years, because I used to mow the lawn at the library, and, uh, while I was out there, weed whacking for the library and everything. I just took my weed whacker and went all the way down past wagon wheel and did around the trees and all down there, just because I thought it looked crappy. And I was out there anyway, so I just did it on my own a few times.
It's one of those tricky things, I don't know the answer. That's the challenge of living in a community in a tightly dense, sometimes that's why I'm like, maybe I should move through the sticks. Make that every day.
Okay, the, the highway guys were very responsive and did a great job.
Excuse me. Alice, you wanted to say?
Yeah, now, these are village sidewalks, right? Who's responsible to shovel the sidewalks in front of their businesses and stuff?
Property owners and, property owners and businesses. And when I was there, my lease.
If someone falls, who do they sue, you or the village?
Probably everybody, knowing the world.
No, I'm just.
Depends on who created the.
Or lease scenarios.
Probably everybody, they'd probably sue the business, the property owner and the village, right?
Yeah, it depends on who created the condition.
The trip and fall at Ten Market Street.
From other nature?
They sued everybody. And then it gets down to who actually is responsible for it.
Well, who would be responsible, the person that's supposed to shovel?
In that particular case, it's village-owned property, in other cases, it could be the property owner, but.
So like when I was on Main Street, in my lease I had signed, I was responsible for the sidewalk. So I would do that. So probably.
If you did.
The land, if I didn't, or if I didn't do it satisfactory, somebody slipped, they'd sue everybody, they'd say, nope, it's Adam's problem, he's got the lease, the landlord would say, it's not my problem, I got a signature, this guy's problem, and I'd get crushed.
Alright, so the sidewalk in front of my house, if I didn't shovel it and somebody fell, am I getting sued or the village?
Probably both, and you'd probably lose and the village would be alright, right?
Yeah, I, I don't.
Because it's your responsibility to shovel your property.
This is, uh.
That's what I was saying.
This is a televised meeting and I, there's people out there that.
We're giving hints, people are. People are taking notes.
No, it's just reality, I mean.
Right.
That's why we have an ordinance on the books, to, to shovel your sidewalk if you're.
There is an ordinance, like you can go around this village in the winter. Maybe twenty-four hours later, that sidewalk still hasn't been shoveled, but nobody gets summons or anything.
That, that's.
That's a matter of enfor- that's a matter of enforcement.
That's everywhere, it is, it's.
That's an excuse card, that's, that's.
Well, what would we be able to do? What could we do? Like.
Give out the summons for the ones that.
They do.
There are summonses that are, are, are given.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I'm saying like sometimes, it, like I see sometimes, there's people and they just snow blow. 'Cause they know that person's never gonna snow blow. I don't think it's right, and I'm not really someone to wanna do that. But, the reality, I lived next to somebody, it was never, it was never done. And they got summons, then it still was never done. 'Cause some people don't care about this. Like, it's all about what you ethically, what you're gonna do for your, 'cause of who you are, and some people don't care. That's the thing that's like, I don't know, it's crazy.
It's a matter of enforcement.
But if there are laws.
Yeah, but you're not gonna go to jail, there's nothing, it's like, right, I mean, what, what happens, nothing, it's like, they go, okay, I got a summons.
Well, maybe they, uh, need summons more.
It depends what the summons is for, and if there'll be a dollar amount if they are found guilty, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and the judge has parameters of what he can fine you.
Alright, thank you, Adam.
Thank you. I have a quick update on a couple highway things.
Sure.
So I was in, I was informed by, uh, the highway super Pajee that the, uh, signs were installed on Reservoir, Franklin and Clapp, and they were inspected by the police commissioner and, uh, the highway super, and everything's in order?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
They're enforcing that, we have offices out there.
So that's all been done, and also, they've been, uh, the highway guys have been continuing on sidewalks throughout the village. Uh, West Main Street, High Street, Spring Street, doing a good job, so, that's all.
One update on the, uh, the banners that are out there, hometown heroes, the second phase of three phases for this season is almost complete, they're gonna go back out again on Saturday. There, um, if you notice, I'm sure you have, some are wrinkled, and that's because of the hardware that was used is old and it's being replaced. And, uh, they'll put up some more this weekend. And the third phase will be ordered, and hopefully we can get them up by the end of.
John.
Mid-September.
Uh, you said they're going out this weekend to do that?
Correct.
Now, who's on traffic detail?
Same people, but they've been told that they have to have their vest and they have to have a flag.
Alright, my concern is, is, I don't think they're covered under the village's insurance. If their cars get hit, who's responsible? Or if they get hurt out there, or get hit, who's responsible?
Well, they're doing visible, it's work, if you want me to call the broker and ask him, I will tomorrow.
My, my opinion on this, just so the board knows, and I think we should touch base on it, that if we have one of our hi- if we have our highway guy, any of our highway personnel working on and about the highway, then we should have our highway department that's trained and understand how traffic protection works, protecting our people, they're under our insurance policy. If not them, then we reach out to the police department. But I, I, I'm okay with volunteers parking cars into like a grass parking area. I'm not okay with them directing traffic on a state road.
Okay.
So I think we need to look into that situation.
Well, if that's how the board feels, we'll suspend putting up any more banners.
We don't have to suspend it, but we just, we, what I'm saying is if we can bring in, you know, if we have to bring in two workers on the highway department to protect our workers in that truck and direct the traffic, then I think that's the appropriate way to do it. So, I just think we should have a discussion on that, I don't think we need to suspend. So I just think we should have a discussion on that. I don't think we need to suspend putting up anything if we're scheduled, but I think we might need to bring some, either the police department in or the highway department into direct traffic, and we could touch on it.
I'm not really heading up that part of the program, but I'll tell Cindy that you not only have the two twilligers there, but you have two highway workers there. Is that what you're?
Well, the twill- I don't, I don't really think it's necessary to have the twilligers in the street directing traffic. I think that we should have highway guys with vehicles, with their flashing lights, them directing traffic, wha- whatever way they usually would direct traffic in the, in the, in the state road, because they'd be working for the village, and we'd be responsible for our person that's working there also, that's somebody that's qualified to do the flagging job.
Cause their cars are in the, in the streets with them.
Huh?
They should be putting them up, the highway, if they're gonna direct traffic.
I know, but they won't, they will not put banners up for some reason. I don't get it. I don't, I don't get it, but.
What do you mean, they won't put banners up?
We don't have anything to put them up with, so we can't put them.
What about the, oh, you mean a bucket truck?
Yes.
Oh, oh, oh.
So why is our highway employee there if we're not, if they're not putting up a banner?
That's how they, last weekend with a bucket truck that they got from Jack Fedigan.
That's somebody else's bucket truck. It's not the highway.
That's Jack Fedigan's truck. He let the village use it.
Well, at this juncture, what, what I'm discussing is the flag protection for our, our employee there. Regard, we have an employee there that's with a person that Mr. Fedigan wanted to operate his truck, is, is what I'm.
Pat?
Yes.
So if, if our employee isn't putting up the banner, why is our employee there?
No, the person operating the truck is, was the person that Jack Fedigan wanted in his truck, but our guy is assisting to put up the banner.
Well, I understand that there's a relation there. Should that maybe be a volunteer? I mean, now you're asking to change the whole operation.
I'm, I'm not. I'm asking to put.
No, 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 I'm just trying to figure it out.
If we wanna get serious about it, we shouldn't even have the bucket truck in the middle of the state road with just random people directing traffic without, you know, permits.
I mean, if the whole point is to protect the person driving the truck, is that, is that what it is?
I wanna, I wanna, first of all, I don't want ci- civilians with their cars in, in the street directing traffic for something we're doing. It's, where, whether you're volunteering or not, you're doing something for the village, and I believe we could ask the attorney that we'd probably be held liable if their car got hit, or they got hit, or somebody got hurt because they said go, and this person said stop. So if we're gonna be responsible, we should be responsible for the whole thing.
I, I understand that. What I'm saying is the person that's driving the truck, does it have to be, si- since they're, they don't wanna get in there and they don't wanna put them up, does that particular person have to be one of our highway department people?
Not in the truck, it don't have to be.
No, I want our highway, I want our village to, to supply the, the, the traffic, to handle it. I don't know how Police Commissioner Perry.
It just seems to me everybody, everybody was volunteering, but the driver.
You get my vote, Pat.
The driver was the highway employee.
Right, so the Pat?
You get my vote, let the highway do it.
Yeah, he's volunteering, right? To do the traffic. The driver was volunteering.
He wasn't.
Volunteering.
Yeah, that's nor, that's not even the issue. I'm saying I want proper flag protection for, not only for all the village residents, but the employees and volunteers putting up the banner. It's the flag protection, and I think the commissioner would agree with me that it shouldn't be a volunteer in the state road.
I think anytime you're on a public highway, it should be highway or police. If you think of things like the Duchess County Fair, you've been to the Duchess County Fair, you pull into the parking lot, it's all volunteers. But outside on the street, it's state police, the county sheriff. Public highway should never be a volunteer.
I just, I just wanna, I just wanna understand the situation. I was under the impression that we were paying our guys to be there to put up the banners, so I just, just so I understand, it seems that the person, even our person that was there was there on his own time. Is that correct?
No, we're, no, no.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got someone telling me yes, someone telling me no.
Well, I think he's, he's getting, not getting paid. He's Jack's grandson who drove the truck.
I just wanna understand what's going on.
A guy in a bucket, is a retired or cable vision guy, and the twilligers were doing traffic. So what we're, only, what Pat's asking is, is just have two highway guys come in that flag the traffic.
And they're gonna volunteer.
I don't know.
Well, is it better to have the highway guys, or is it better to have the police?
Just get somebody since they wanna come in with the buckets.
Either, either or, at least they know how to do the traffic.
Well, I'm not debating. I'm just asking, since it's not the highway doing the work, is it, and maybe we'll, we can ask you, is it better to have the police, or is neither better nor worse?
When they, when they first did it.
I saw you standing.
I was there.
Right.
I was basically a volunteer. I, I didn't put in hours for that day. But I did it by myself, and everything went fine. We had no complaints, nothing went wrong.
But if you were volunteering, are we not?
The police aren't gonna volunteer, highway's not gonna volunteer, because they have.
Well, I'm not suggesting that they volunteer. What I'm just trying to point out is if you were volunteering, we still, we weren't protected insurance-wise or anything.
Well, it's more for the attorney, but I, I'm pretty sure that one section of uh, the law where I, I put in the complaint saying the people aren't protected, I think as long as you're an official volunteer in the village, you're considered an employee, and you would be covered.
All right. Look, let's, I'll tell Cindy tomorrow. Tell the twilligers to hold off, work with Pete.
Well, let's, I mean, this is just something I brought up, that it was brought to my attention that, you know, there was issues with the flag protection. It's a great point. So whatever, yeah, we do, we need to just find, figure out a way to do it where everybody's safe, and the traffic is, there's not an issue, and.
Well, that's what we're doing now. We're trying to figure this out. So, I'll have Cindy contact Pete Pajee tomorrow and see if you can get two people Saturday morning at seven thirty to go along with them.
Right, and I think that that would be the best option to go, cause we have all the, they have the equipment that they need. They know what they're doing.
Okay. Good, good. I like that. I like that a lot, cause I got a lot of.
I mean, I'm not saying volunteers can't be, volunteers can't be there handing flags on the side of the road and doing whatever they do. They're great. I appreciate them. I'm worried about their safety is my number one concern for everybody.
Okay.
All right.
And that's fine, Pat. I just wanted to understand the setup of what was going on, cause I was just a little unsure who was working it. Okay?
Okay, good.
Any other comments?
Great program you guys are doing.
Yep. It's, we're getting a lot of people complimenting the program. It's a sizable amount of work behind the scenes that you don't even see. Coordinating, getting the photographs, ordering the banners, getting the hardware, getting people to come in with a bucket truck and getting drivers. It's a lot of work.
Are they still taking, are they, are you still allowed to order?
You can order for next year.
Okay.
When will they come down?
Uh,
Probably in.
Right after, um.
Right after Veterans Day, right?
Right after Veterans Day. Yep.
Yeah.
Right?
I think before then.
Before Veterans Day?
What?
See, it's a sizable amount of work to put them up. Now you gotta go back through with traffic and take them all down and store them.
Right, but once they're all, I mean, once they're all up to come down, they could just work.
Right.
You know, and then they're not jumping around and figuring, messing with the brackets. I think it'll come down a lot easier.
We can get a process. We're, this is new.
Oh, no, I'm all for it. Now, I'm try, I've just tried, I've been trying to support um, Cindy when she calls, you know, with issues, and we're trying to help, but I just wanted to meet, it was brought to my attention, so I felt necessary.
It's a learning process, and uh, it's good. I'm glad you brought that up. I didn't realize all of that. We're gonna have an added expense though, that we hadn't planned on.
It's worth it. Safety, it's a worthy cause.
It's a gower man on safety.
Okay. Mayor, did you have anything else?
No, I'm asking if anyone else has anything else.
I just have one thing to bring up. Do we have any motion on the crosswalk that's in front of Elme's Outdoor Seating? That crosswalk, there's a parking spot there. We were talking about restriping it uh, at last meeting, because it's too close. The parking spot is.
The Legislative Committee proposed several law changes.
Yes.
Where are you with that?
That is a good question, Craig. Where are we with that?
That's a state highway. We have to get ahold of the state to do that.
Send it to the state?
Call the state.
Yeah, we sent it to Mayor. Okay, we gotta get that to the state.
You've gotta be twenty feet away from the crosswalk. Can't park there. It's dangerous. You don't know if people are coming out to get in their car, or if they're coming out to cross the street. Okay? Does that answer your question, Mike? Fortunately, yes. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.